Okay, it's 7:00 PM. Time for us to begin. I want to wish everyone a good evening and a welcome to the League of Women Voters of Ames and Story County Candidate Forum for Ames City Council. For those who are not familiar, the League is a nonpartisan political organization dedicated to encouraging citizens to be informed participants in their government on the local, state, and national levels. This is Wednesday, October 18th, and tonight we will meet the candidates for the Ames City Council race. This forum is being recorded and will be played on the League of Women Voters of Ames and Story County Facebook page and KHOIFM 89 at a later date. My name is Dr. Linda Hagedorn, and I'm a member of the League, and I will moderate tonight's forum. All declared candidates for this offices, for this office has been invited to the forum. Tonight, we have with us Anita Rollins, who is running for candidate at large, Brownwin Beatty Hansen of Ward 1, Timothy Garten of Ward 2, Gloria Betcher of Ward 3, and Rachel Junk of Ward 4. If you'd like to see a map of the wards and the area and territory that they cover, we do have one in the back that you can look at after, at the end of the forum. The forum this evening will be divided into three sections. First will be the candidates' opening statements. Secondly, questions from you, the audience. And finally, closing statements from the candidates, as time allows. Audience members, if you have a question to ask the candidates, please raise your hand and a runner will bring you a card. I will read the questions to the candidates from the podium. Candidates, you will be given 90 seconds to give your response to audience questions. If there are questions yet to be asked as 8:00 PM approaches, audience questions will take priority over closing remarks. In the tradition of the League of Women Voters, we want every candidate to have an equal say. So candidates, please try to limit your opening remarks to three minutes each. Our timekeeper, John Claus, will hold up a card when you have 30 seconds left in your allotted time. We will start the introductory remarks with Brownwin Beatty Hansen.
Hi, everyone. Well, as was mentioned, my name is Brownwin Beatty Hansen. And if you don't know me, I'll just give a little background about myself. So I'm from Emmitsburg, Iowa originally. Grew up on a farm outside of Emmitsburg and came to Ames to go to Iowa State and never left, as is the case with a lot of folks in town. My day job is at Wheatfield Cooperative, where I've worked for over 20 years now this year. And I've served the past eight years on city council, though I did serve my past two terms as the at-large representative. So this year, I'm running for Ward 1. And as Linda mentioned, there's a map in the back that shows the wards. They did change after the most recent census. There was redistricting and the wards changed. So I would just encourage people to make sure you know where you're at. Oh, there, there's it. Perfect.
And it even shows where you would be voting.
Perfect, yeah. Great, yeah, thank you. It's really been an honor to serve so far, and so really, I'm just looking forward to continuing that service on council. I think the items that I am most looking forward to, or that I have the most zeal for, I guess, would be anything related to climate change and sustainability. That does encompass a lot of topics, though. So coming up, we're looking at garbage and solid waste systems. I think that'll be impactful and important. We'll be looking at energy generation and incentives for things like solar. I'm looking forward to all those. And then even housing density and housing availability ties into sustainability, and that's always an issue for Ames as well. So again, that's just sort of a short summary, but I look forward to the questions you have.
Thank you. Dr. Gloria Betcher.
So I'm Gloria Betcher. I have been on council as well for 10 years, serving Ward 1, but I was one of the council members who was redistricted after the last census. So I am running for Ward 3. And I came to Ames in 1993, having grown up in Hay Creek, Minnesota, also on a farm, if you couldn't guess that from the name Hay Creek. And I'm a teaching professor of English at Iowa State University. My husband, Dr. Douglas Biggs, is in Nebraska most of the time because he is the interim Assistant Vice Chancellor for International Affairs at the University of Nebraska at Kearney. But he is an Ames native and an Iowa State alumnus. I was not planning to run again because of the redistricting, and my colleague Anita over here was already in Ward 3. But because of our musical chairs, of our seats, we are able to run, and Brownwin can run for my seat. I did think it was important for us to have some consistency on council, though, because as you might have realized, all of us are up for election, and that leaves only the other at-large member, Amber Corriere, and the mayor as sitting council members. And so it's somewhat of a relief to see that there will be some consistency, but I wish that we had had more people step up to run against us, because I think that it's important that new voices are brought to council. So with that consistency, I would say that I got into politics, running for council, because people wanted a neighborhood advocate, and I have seen the value in that consistently in my years on council. And now, as Brownwin mentioned, we're looking at things like housing density, which impacts our single-family neighborhoods perhaps more than some others. And we're also looking at how we can preserve our affordable housing stock that we already have. And our older homes, our smaller homes, are that affordable housing stock. The starter homes that many of us had, and some of us still live in, are the ones that can house those new families that we want to attract to Ames. Another thing that I value and that I think I bring to council is my experience and interest in historic preservation. I was the chair of the Preservation Commission for seven years, and while that might sound a little bit esoteric, and sometimes it's a little bit against the equitable use of housing, it's also important for sustainability, because the greenest house or the greenest building is one that's already built. And so it becomes ever more important for us to ensure that our older housing stock and our older buildings are maintained and able to not only take our families into the future, but to preserve our history.
Thank you. Mr. Timothy Garten?
Well, thank you to the League and for the library hosting this. Thank you for coming out tonight. You've got to get some, oh, are we on? Okay. So again, thank you for coming out. And you know, when there's not a contested race, there's not, this is not like a NASCAR event where you're going to see some train, some car wrecks tonight. So this is not as, perhaps as an eventful event to attend, but I appreciate you coming. And I love the nonpartisan aspect of the League of Women Voters. We live in the most divided country that we have lived in since the Civil War. And so to have the League serving in a nonpartisan role is very important. We strive very hard as a council to maintain a nonpartisan stance. In fact, I wish that our Board of Supervisors was nonpartisan, and I wish every county office was nonpartisan. That's how much I think of this. So I'm very happy to be here. My wife Tara and I, she's here tonight, have been in Ames. We started here in the mid-'80s as students, came back for grad school, and then came back again, been practicing law here for the last 27 years. We have four children, one grandchild, and one grandchild on the way, and we love Ames. We think this is the best city in the world and look forward to the better days ahead. I think this is important as a forum tonight as well, because we literally have had no press coverage from the Ames Tribune for months. And so this is an opportunity for you to hear from us about the things we've been working on and respond to the issues that are important to you. But it is not good for democracy when there is no accountability with the press, and I have never been more convinced of this than I am right now. This could be a very interesting discussion tonight. Like any family, there are things we agree on, and there are things where we disagree on, and that's healthy. That's why you have six members on the council. I am running again. I'm very interested in the budget. It's the most important thing we do. We have about a $283 million budget, which most people are amazed that our budget is of that size. I'm very proud of the fact that our city's increase in the budget was very, very small compared to what was going on in inflation. So we have a very solid budget. I'm very proud of the budget. I'm also very interested in infrastructure. We're looking at doing something major with our Resource Recovery Plant. We're not sure what that's going to be, but part of my reason to run again was to have a role in that future. I'm also interested in economic development. Because of the things that are happening with the legislature, it's going to make it even more important that, as cities, we expand our tax base. I'm also very interested in housing issues. We have a serious housing crisis in Ames. We really don't have affordable housing any longer. And I'm also interested in common sense protection for neighborhoods' quality of life and paths to help all of our residents move forward. I look forward to your questions tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Junk?
Hi, everyone. My name is Rachel Junk, and I use pronouns she/her. So you may remember me from last election, being an Iowa State student. That has since changed. I graduated in May. So now I graduated with my bachelor's in chemical engineering and my MBA, and I work at Chevron Renewable Energy Group in town as a project engineer. So with this shift from student to young professional, some of my ideas have also changed, and one of the focuses that I want to focus on in the next four years on council would be the brain drain. And what we see is students that come to Iowa State and they take their talent elsewhere afterwards. And so some things that go into this would be workforce in the community, having opportunities available for young people to have opportunities to stay and work in our community. This goes into housing, having the right type of diverse housing options, affordable housing options, and starter homes for young families to want to start and build their lives and careers here. This also goes into amenities and things we have throughout the community. Time and time again, I hear about how great our Ames farmers market is, our parks and rec opportunities, different events throughout the community, and so these are things that I want to continue supporting on council as well. Some of the issues that we started talking about four years ago, like climate action, have now moved a lot, and we have an implemented climate action plan. But now comes in the challenging piece of being able to assign funding, start new programs, and really take this and run with it and put a lot of actions into implementation for the city. So I would look forward to all of these sorts of platform ideas and many of the others that council discussed. It's always a variety. Every single council meeting is different, and that's one of the things I love about it, is being able to make an impact on the amazing residents of Ames and make this place better for everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
Well, I want to add my thank you for you all coming out tonight and being part of this conversation. Anita Rollins, running at large. I'm completing my second year on council, and yes, I'm glad it worked for us to try to find a way to add consistency to the council by, and thank you for everyone being willing to consider new positions in order to make that happen. Over the past two years, the kinds of things I've been involved in as part of my council-related work has been serving on the Ames Economic Development Commission Board, and also I'm a member of the International Town and Gown Racial Justice and Equity Committee. Like all of the council members, one of the things we value most is getting out into the community as much as we can and having conversations with you about the things that are on your mind, and that's the thing that I find most valuable, hearing what your ideas are, what things concern you. Those definitely, those voices are in our heads as we are making decisions on council. In terms of my own background, I retired from Iowa State University in 2019, after more than 20 years with an educational program there and as a communications specialist. During my more than 30 years in Ames, I've volunteered in a variety of places. I've served on the Ames Community School District School Board, as well as in Ames Schools, and actually, I'm doing some work in the schools now. I have been secretary of the Ames branch of the NAACP and served on a number of their committees. I'm a volunteer at Butterfly Freedom House, a board member of Northwest Banks, finance chair at Friendship Baptist Church. Some people don't retire very well, and so they find a lot of ways to fill up their time, and I know I'm in good company here. So like the other council members, one of the things that I enjoy is the policy work, as well as the budgetary work. Also, we have amazing staff in the city. One of the things that really impressed me when I was doing my sort of introductory tour to all the departments is the number of years that people stay and are employed in Ames. And I think that has a great deal to do with them feeling good about working for the city. And so I think we have a lot to be proud of. Definitely, some of the issues that have already been expressed are important to me as well. Something that I hope to work on more in this next term would be thinking about increasing partnerships. A lot of my work at Iowa State was with faculty and STEM areas, and I think there are some opportunities to be the first site for some of that work, testing that applied science within the city in ways that serve us well.
Okay, thank you, candidates. We will now transition into the audience questions. Each of the candidates will have 90 seconds in which to answer. Everyone will have a chance to answer every single question in turn. Okay. The first question from the audience is, what do you feel is the most important issue facing Ames today? And I'm going to add, and what would you like to do about it? Okay? And we'll start with Dr. Betcher.
You know, I should have an answer for this. I think that the challenge of keeping people in Ames and attracting people to Ames, and those people that we're seeking to attract are the young professionals, the families. But also, this relates to other issues, like having affordable housing for those families and providing amenities, as Rachel said, for those families. And so I can't honestly say that I ever look at that question and see one problem, because when I see one problem, I see the way it relates to many other problems. And I'm too much of a big thinker and seeing those webs of connections, which sometimes people value, but it makes it hard to answer this question in 90 minutes. So what I plan to do about it is to continue working on figuring out ways that we can have a variety of housing stock in this community, figuring out ways that we can use our budget effectively so that we can have those amenities, and working with the rest of the council to strategize about ways to attract more people to Ames.
Thank you. Mr. Garten, again, the question, the most important issue facing Ames today and what you'd like to do about it?
Yeah, thanks. Well, the most important issue facing Ames right now is the housing crisis that we have, and I'm going to do my best to cover this in 90 seconds. We're just not building houses. And this is a problem nationally, if you've been following national news, so this is not certainly isolated. We're at a 23-year high for interest rates, and so there's a lot of factors that are at play here. But we don't have starter houses anymore. And the challenge of that is that people who want to work here, they're forced to live in surrounding communities. And that has impacts on our schools, so their kids aren't in our schools, people aren't participating in our churches and civic organizations. And then this has an ongoing effect, so those young families then don't progress through the community. And so our demographics of Ames will continue, will grow increasingly older as a community. And so the days of having affordable housing in Ames are gone. That ship has sailed, and so we need to build more houses at all price points. And if we're concerned about climate, we need to build more houses here, because a third of the people who work in Ames have to commute. So if we want to reduce the number of miles driven, we need to allow people to live in Ames.
Thank you. Ms. Junk?
I would also echo Tim and say that the biggest issue for Ames is housing. I think it's time and time again what I hear from constituents that have problems, and also issues from students as well, having issues finding affordable rentals. So it's not just owner-occupied, it goes through the whole aspect of housing. I think an important piece of this is to have diverse housing options that can make things more affordable. So one thing the council has took action on in the past four years would be to make zoning updates to allow for smaller lot sizes. This allows for smaller homes to be built, which are slightly more affordable than a brand-new home on a larger lot. But again, this is just a very small piece, so something to continue working on is updates to our zoning to make housing options easier to develop. And then another big piece of this that we're working on right now would be accessory dwelling units and duplexes. We're looking at ways for people in Ames to build these or convert garages or other structures on their property to this. They're a smaller housing option that allows for more family members to live there. It could be used as a rental, but this is just a new idea that the city is working on, that we're trying to further and implement more sort of creative ideas like this to increase our housing stock.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
Well, I hate to sound a bit like a broken record, but I agree that housing is one of those big issues. That housing stock issue is something that we also considered as part of that exterior maintenance piece, that policy that will go into effect in January, is looking at how can we make sure that those structures stay usable during the time not only someone is living there, but once they may have moved. The other thing is, as everyone has already echoed, it's not unique to us, but it will take some creativity, and I do appreciate some of the other ideas that we have been hearing about, like cottage homes, so something like tiny homes that would be on even smaller lots. But when we think about that wealth gap, as well as thinking about those that are unhoused at this point, those unhoused low and middle-income earners are the ones that we are really wanting to focus on and make sure that there's housing available here in the city for them.
Okay. Ms. Beatty Hansen?
Sure, I'll switch it up a little. Not that I don't disagree that housing is an important issue, but I think the implementation of our climate action plan is going to be a big lift for the city, not only in terms of cost, but just the sheer magnitude of the changes that are going to be needed and getting citizen buy-in to those and getting business and industry buy-in to changes that we're going to need to make, I think is important and will be difficult. And I don't know how much you know about the climate action plan, but there are six big moves, that we call them, that are sort of the big concepts of things that we'll be looking at. So reducing waste emissions, so again, looking at the solid waste system we have currently, improvements we can make there. Renewable energy, so how, and how solid waste ties into our energy production, which it always has in Ames, right? That'll be important. Looking at how we can incentivize building retrofits or, yeah, different programs to help encourage those. Net-zero new construction, again, without dampening the creation of new houses, because I agree that we do still need to see housing starts. We need to see those numbers climb as well. So how to do net-zero new construction or encourage that and not dampen the market, right? That'll be important. Reducing vehicle emissions and active transportation and transit use are the other pieces of those six big moves.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next question, and we will start with Mr. Garten, is what is the status of the link? Lincoln Way looks like an urban desert. Can signage be used to explain the concept to visitors? So tell us about the Lincoln Way corridor.
Do you have any other questions? I mean, is there, I probably would be better with something else. This is what you want? Now, I really don't have a lot to report on, so we're waiting right now for further negotiations with the developer. And look, I'm very sympathetic. All of us feel badly. It looks like a bomb went off there in a very important corridor of the community. My understanding is, is that everything is moving forward with this, but it's unlike any development we've ever seen. So in our prior developments, the developers are running all over themselves to get things started. And so the increase in interest rates have affected commercial development across the country, and so pro formas that are built upon certain assumptions are having to be recalculated. So that's as much as I think anyone of us can give you. Maybe the other council members have something else, but that's all we've been told.
A second point on the same question is, what is the status of the new indoor pool?
I mean, we're moving forward with the pool, so there have been challenges with this in terms of figuring out how to accommodate the soil, contaminated soils. We can talk more about this if you have an interest in this question. But, so the engineers are working on that, and I don't have the specific timeframe. Now, maybe somebody knows the specific timeframe, but we're moving forward. But it's going to be a while, and unfortunately, this is an important amenity for a city our size to have an indoor pool, and we're getting some cooperation with the university in Green Hills, but it's important that we get an indoor pool. So I don't have anything more to say on that at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Junk, is there anything more that you can add about the Lincoln corridor or the indoor pool?
I would just add that as soon as there is more updates on the link, you'll know it as soon as we do. All of our council agendas are posted on Friday afternoons, and then we would discuss that topic on a Tuesday. But since this is such an important development, I'm sure that we would have time for public input at that meeting and probably not make a decision at that meeting either. Make sure that we get community input involved before making a decision on that. And yeah, same for the pool.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
I don't think I have anything additional to add about the Lincoln Way project, but yes, things are moving forward with the Aquatic Center. We are moving forward as quickly as we can, being aware of some of the challenges. We felt that we heard clearly from the community that there was interest in recovering this site for something that would be a good amenity for the community, but we know that that has to be done in a way that will ensure that it is a facility that will be used for years to come, and that's what we're seeking to do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brownwin Beatty?
Yeah, I don't know that I would add much. You know, with the link, I think, you know, Tim mentioned that just the climate for development being more challenging post-pandemic, right? And post, you know, the supply chain issues and everything. But I think also in town here, we have some competing projects. You know, that Sytown project, I think maybe changed the trajectory there a little bit. And then as far as the pool, I think, you know, everyone's touched on that, too. We're moving ahead with both seeking construction bids and applying for approval from the state, so any pool, of course, needs to be approved by the state, and it's a pretty robust process. So we're doing that right now. And I think that we would plan for the pool to be open in 2025. That's if things go, you know, as, on track from now on. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Ms. Betcher?
So I did get an update on the link, and what you're hearing here is what I heard, that it's the interest rates that are slowing that project, but also that because of those slowing interest rates, it's making it very difficult for the developers to cash flow the project. And so they're looking at perhaps shrinking some of it, changing the configuration of the project so that it will cash flow in the new economic climate.
Thank you.
Excuse me. As far as the Aquatic Center goes, the only thing that I would add is that one of the current discussions is how we can install geothermal wells in light of the challenges that that site faces with the contamination in one of the corners of the site. And so we are getting reports on those and looking at ways the site. And so we are getting reports on those and looking at ways to possibly do geothermal, but trying to assess whether it is safe to do it, whether it is wise to do it. Right now, it would have to be put under the building. And I have concerns about that because there would not be access to repair aspects of the system. So Bronwyn, I believe, is right in saying 2025 at the earliest is when we would see the opening.
Thank you. Okay, for this next question, and Ms. Young, you will begin with your response. The writer has asked me to please read the question as written, so I will try to do that. "The council was alerted/educated about ways to save our streets, our air quality, even saving residents' money by reevaluating our waste haulers arrangement. Where are we in coming to grips with so many waste haulers on our streets?"
Yeah, so this issue is in progress, and not sure when the next update will come back to us. I wish I did have an update on it because I think it is such an important piece of climate action. We know that with seven haulers, I think, operating in Ames, these could be going down the same city streets multiple times a day to pick up garbage. And that's just not efficient, and it's not a best practice. There are many other Iowa communities and communities across the country that have an organized waste collection system. And so that is the direction that we're hoping to move towards for climate action reasons and also efficiency and also budget. The more that we have to resurface and repair streets, the more tax money that takes. And so I think that hopefully this issue will be moving forward soon, and we are trying to get a lot of public input on it as well. We would welcome that, since it is an important piece and everyone has garbage collection.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Rowland?
Yes, I'd agree with those comments. We have been getting reports about the potential savings, as well as what that impact is currently by having the various haulers. We've had discussions about is there a way to phase out so that we're not impacting companies at this point and saying who can be here serving and who can't. We've had discussions also about ensuring that any of those that stay in the market do have curbside recycling. So those conversations are continuing. We do appreciate, this is another example of how we do listen and want to respond to those great ideas that bubble up from the community. And so we're looking forward to continuing to look at how we can implement that here. You know, having lived in other places, I will say this was the only place I've ever lived where we have this type of a system. But when you've had it this long, people love their choice. And so we, but we are, we're continuing to have those hard discussions.
Thank you. Ms. Bronwyn Beatty?
I think we should be getting an update soon. I really hope it's in November. I kind of expected the update to come in October, but we haven't seen it yet. It is a really complicated topic, though, because of some of the things that were already mentioned. So we would love to be able to offer recycling as well as garbage pickup. For the history of me being in Ames anyway, the city has said, oh, just throw everything in the same bin, we'll sort it, you know. Turns out that was too good to be true, right? That wasn't happening all the time. Some of it just gets sent to Boone's landfill, unsorted, right? So we're not actually recycling. Anyway, so we need to fix that, I think. But that's a big piece. And then looking at how that fits into the energy plant. So currently, that plant is made to burn refuse. It requires natural gas to do so. You can only burn about 10% refuse with the natural gas. So you have to be burning quite a bit of natural gas, too. It's awful on the boilers. And so looking at that is a big topic, too. So I think it's just taken longer than just looking at the waste haulers because of all the issues that it touches.
Thank you. Dr. Batchard?
So I won't cover everything that everybody else did, but I would also add that part of the complexity is that we do care what residents have to say. And so what we hear from residents who want to maintain their choice, and we hear from residents who want to see a significant reduction in the routes, and we hear from residents who want to be sure that they can keep their rates for hauling low, we've got three different perspectives on why we should make changes or not. And we're trying to balance those along with that issue of the haulers and what this could do to their businesses and to their employees. And so it's not as simple as saying this is bad for the streets, this is bad for the environment. It also can be bad for people in various ways. And I think we're trying to be conscious of making sure that we make a good choice, but we maybe don't have the perfect choice. Whatever we come up with will certainly be better than what we've got now. And I think you can be sure that the city will not be taking on the hauling.
Mr. Garten?
I don't have a lot to add. There's more to come. We're going to get a report. The one thing I would add to this, I have a particular interest in composting. And you can pray for my wife, because that's something that we try to do. And it drives her nuts sometimes. Sorry about that. I called you out on this. I'll pay for the price for that later. But we compost in my office, and we try to compost at home. And this is a big deal because sending that kind of material in our waste stream is not good. So we're trying to reduce the biological waste that goes in to our waste stream. And so my plug here tonight, if you're looking for an application of a way to make the world a better place, is to consider composting at home. But it requires right now that you haul the composting to this location site by the Resource Recovery. And sometimes I don't haul it as often as my wife would like me to, and hence the source of tension. Sorry about that. I took some ownership for this. But I, weekly, I will haul that out there. And not everyone is able to do that. And so it would be, I would like to see some options if we could provide composting in this process. I think it would be setting an example for other communities. I like the idea of Ames being the standard bearer and setting new examples for other communities to follow. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Rowland, you'll be the first to answer this next question. I'm combining some comments from a couple of the audience members. They would like an update on the housing trust that was formed some years ago, as well as there's interest in, again, the Aquatic Center, Shanker Park, and the State Street Affordable Housing Project. So, yeah. So basically, the housing, housing trust and the State Street Affordable Housing Project.
So I am not the one to answer the question about the housing trust. And so perhaps one of the other council members might know more about that. And we've shared some about the Aquatic Center and where we are in terms of that piece. And I don't know if that was a question then about finances, but bond issues are going forward, and funds had previously been raised, and we are moving on the Aquatic Center. In terms of the ice arena and that area across the Shanker Park that's across from the city, that is going forward. There were a few glitches that were hit with the developer in terms of some of those ice components and what was needed. And that is now moving again. If you've been over that way, you're seeing action on that piece of property again. And State Street, that has moved forward as well. I don't know if you've been over that way, but Habitat for Humanity purchased several of those. One is almost completely enclosed now. Another two are framed and going up. And so that is progressing. Also, we had a couple of false starts with developers in terms of the attached townhomes. But that developer that most recently applied did receive Lytech funding, and we're expecting that project to be moving quickly as possible now. So, yep, good things happening.
Thank you. Ms. Bronwyn Beatty, any comments on housing or the Aquatic Center?
Well, I think we've kind of covered that, too. I hope the Aquatic Center especially. The housing trust, so just what I know about that one. Sorry, thank you. So that is a county-wide program, and it's in effect. They are in existence now, and there's monies available for, I think, both owner-occupied and rental properties to access. I know that for owner-occupied, it's improvements that you can make to your house. You have to be in, you have to meet certain income requirements of the program. But they provide funding for health and safety-related improvements, even to owner-occupied properties in Story County. But again, the whole county would be competing for those dollars.
Thank you. Dr. Batchard?
So I do not know that much about the housing trust either because it is run by the county. Now, if Councilmember Coriary were here, she'd be able to fill you in in great detail because she is part of that team. We do provide housing for, or sorry, funding for the housing trust. And we, I assume, are going to continue budgeting that. But it comes up for discussion as part of our annual budget cycle, how much we would be putting into the trust fund from year to year. Because, of course, Ames is part of Story County, and we're a very large part of Story County. There are still funds available for people who are working on their homes, if you meet the guidelines for that. The Shanker Plaza, as I think it was Anita who was saying that it is now back underway, a lot of people thought that there was something that the city had done that was slowing progress. It had nothing to do with us. It was an internal disagreement between our designer and the contractor. And the designs were not going to produce a water feature that would actually function safely and for the long term. We were worried that there may be problems with it quickly. And so the city stepped back and let those two parties deal with it. And as far as State Street goes, the only thing I think we haven't mentioned is that the developer for that project is Jack Hatch. So some of you may know that name.
Thank you. Mr. Garten, anything more to add?
Yeah. So I just want to talk a bit about the housing trust fund. They're doing some innovative things. One of the things that I'm particularly interested in is are there things that we can do in terms of short-term loans or grants to help with maintaining our existing housing stock? And as Gloria mentioned, this is some of our most important housing here. I'll be honest with you, one of the things I worry about happening, if we don't make some progress in building houses, what you're going to start seeing are older houses being torn down and much larger houses being built there. And so this, we sometimes call this gentrification. And I don't think this is good for Ames. I'm not supporting this. And so sometimes a small loan to help maintain a roof or to make some needed improvements can make all the difference in the world of keeping that house in our inventory. The Baker subdivision has been a great learning experience for the community and for the city council in particular. We've learned how expensive it is. We're looking at $100,000 roughly of subsidy per unit. It's extremely expensive to do affordable housing. The only one who's really doing affordable housing well, in my opinion, is Habitat for Humanity. So if you're looking for an organization that's making a difference in the community you want to contribute time or labor to, get involved with Habitat. They are doing a phenomenal job. They're making a real difference, and real lives are being impacted by that. So those are the things I have on that.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Covered all of these pretty well so far. I would just like to highlight the Plaza. It should be open by 2024. The end of 2024 is the plan. And I know a lot of people noticed that things were moving slowly. Sometimes that is just the way that municipal government is, and we see that on the State Street issue as well. Things take time, and especially in Ames, we know that the city staff is putting their all in to make it being done right. And so we're looking forward to seeing more progress on the Plaza. It's got a lot of great elements that I think will really benefit our downtown area, interactive water features, ice in the winter, bike racks, art, places to sit and enjoy the outdoors. And so I think this will be a great amenity for our community that everyone can really benefit from once we're able to have it open.
Thank you. This next question, I think, is a good follow-up. And we'll start with Ms. Baby Hansen. "Water retention basins in new developments are adding land to lots, increasing their size and cost. Increasing lot size is causing increases of new housing costs. How can we retain and control water when adding to the cost of new housing?"
Oh, it's a good question. I would say density, you know, making new developments a little denser. You know, you tend to see the new developments still following the model of a single-family home on a large lot. And that model, I think, is probably going to become increasingly a thing of the past. People need to get used to living in slightly denser circumstances. So that's one answer I have. Of course, stormwater is important, though. We want to make sure that we're controlling it both for safety and property protection, you know, so it's not washing out property, but also for water quality, it's very important. So it is really important that we do retain water. I think that another important piece is the types of plantings that are put down on, you know, on any new construction. Again, this is often up to the developer, but encouraging native plantings or things with bigger root structures that are going to retain water better.
Thank you. Ms. Batchard, if you need the question restated?
Nope, I've got it.
Okay.
One of the interesting things that I have heard about recently in Ames is the way in which some of our PUDs, our Planned Urban Developments, are allowing the sharing of those retention ponds. So they might be on a neighboring property but serving the property that is being constructed. And it's part of the design of that planned urban development to allow that. Not all of our districts do allow that. But it, to me, makes sense if you have a property that wants to have a pond, and you need a pond, and your next door to that property that wants the pond, to get together on that. And we are seeing that with the Ansley Development in South Ames. The other thing that I have been trying to press the city to consider, which doesn't have to do with new starting, new housing starts, is to consider things like blue roofs. Now, that's expensive. It adds to the cost of a building, but it can conserve the land around the building, and the water can be recycled through the building for use in flushing toilets and other things that are not potable drinking functions. So I would love to see us exploring that more often.
Thank you. Mr. Garten?
This is a really cool question. And so just a couple thoughts. Over the last 10 years, I have grown in my admiration for our city staff. And so the work that they do in terms of thinking about surface water flood issues is phenomenal. So any project that's done, there's a thorough review on the impact, and they have very sophisticated modeling. So the work that's happened on South Duff, you've seen that extensive work, that is one of the best things the city has ever done for reducing the impact of flooding in Ames. And so I want to do a shout-out to our city engineers for the phenomenal work they're doing. So any project that's going to be approved has a thorough review. And the question is interesting because we don't socialize those costs. So we make the developer pay those costs, and those costs are then passed on to the people who buy that lot. And so other communities will answer that question differently, but historically, we've concentrated that with the property owner. The issue of lot size is an interesting one. I think we need to offer a variety of housing options. If you look, if you drive to Ankeny, the growth that's happening there is phenomenal. The market still wants to have individual The market still wants to have individual houses. It is not our role as a city council to micromanage what people, where people live, how people live. We're not social engineers. But we certainly can encourage density, and I'm supportive of efforts to encourage density because we need to. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. John?
Yeah, this is an interesting question, and a lot of people have covered more of the stormwater piece of it. I'll take the piece that this is making development very expensive. And so one thing that council is currently working on and hopes to make more progress on in the next few years is having an affordable housing strategy. So instead of treating all of these issues as one-offs, you know, we get requests from developers for assistance on different pieces because of economic conditions in the market. We're asked for money towards rehabilitation for existing housing stock, incentives for density, incentives for climate action and energy efficiency building, both retrofits and new construction. So there are a lot of different pieces of affordable housing that all have to come together. And being able to think about them as a big picture and figure out a strategy for how we'll be able to fund, put together programs, and move forward on these issues is something that I'm really hoping we dive into on council in the coming years.
Ms. Rollins?
Yeah, I would just, my only additional comment would be that the water basin itself isn't necessarily an indicator that the lots have to be a particular size or that housing has to be a particular type. And so I imagine, as folks have visited other communities that you've seen, places where there are water basins, but then there's still a lot of density around those. But yes, our staff does a great job of talking to us about the long-term benefits of these decisions and how they actually do play a role with us being good stewards of the climate, as well as making sure that our communities are safe and that we have what we need.
Thank you. Okay, this is next question. We will begin with Dr. Betcher. The Resource Recovery Plant no longer serves its purpose of generating electricity and disposing of garbage efficiently. What is your solution?
I'm waiting for the staff report. We are actually considering what to do with the Resource Recovery Plant. And I think that some of our decisions are tied up in whether we are buying our electricity from the grid or not. And it's cheaper for us to buy our electricity than to make our electricity. So the fate of the Resource Recovery Plant is linked to the fate of the electric services. We would like to continue having our municipal electric services. And so we have to have those two utilities evolve together. They depend on each other. And without deciding what we're going to be doing with the electricity, we can't move with Resource Recovery and vice versa. So we're moving forward discussing the options for both of them. And I anticipate that within the next probably six months, we're going to be hearing more about what direction we're going. I don't know if that means the final decision.
Thank you. Mr. Curtin?
So I was the one who made a motion a couple of years ago to take a look at doing something different with our Resource Recovery Plant. And here's why. We were spending a tremendous amount of money on maintaining this thing. And if you drive a high-mileage used car, as I do, at some point, the cost of maintenance starts getting crazy. And that's where we were with the Resource Recovery Plant. And I want to encourage you, we're working with the best consultant I have ever had the opportunity to work with, with the city. These people are geniuses. We're working with the best people in the country. But we don't have anything concrete to report tonight. There are a number of interesting options that are being evaluated. All of them are going to be really expensive. So prepare yourself for some sticker shock. So this is a decision that we have to make. It will be a long-term decision. I am very confident it will be something that we do that will be consistent with our Climate Action Plan, which I'm very supportive of that. And I wish we had more time to talk about the Climate Action Plan, but I'm very supportive of how this could fit into that proposal.
Thank you. Ms. John?
Yeah, I would kind of echo what's already been said. The Waste to Energy Study was started, and we have several options there. But many of the solutions were millions or billions of dollars, which doesn't make sense with our city budget and tax base. So we're going to have to figure out an innovative solution. And the Resource Recovery Center was very innovative for its time. And I think that we have potential as Ames to be another leader and coming up with another innovative solution moving forward. With that, I think there's some opportunity for different partnerships. But many of this will have to be fleshed out by our City of Ames staff before coming back to council for a decision on it. And it's a very technical topic. And so that's why it's been taking a long time, is city staff is working on putting together all the options to make sure that we get it right.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
And I would echo those comments. And it has been really great to see how the staff and our consultant have brought us a variety of options, some that are even only done in a couple of places around the world. And so they haven't limited their thought process to what they have seen done locally. They are considering everything that may be out there. We do have that issue of what it will cost. But we are thinking about that climate action component and how we can move forward in a way that is conscious, conscious of our goal, as well as that, the sticker part of it. And that's one of the great things about being on council. The decisions we make affect us as well. And so we want to make that best decision that moves us forward, as well as thinks about what's the pocketbook going to look like for our residents.
Thank you. Ms. Beatty Hansen?
This is a great question. And I think, like most of the rest of council here alluded to, we don't know 100% yet what will become of that Resource Recovery Plant. But what I think, what I think I know is that citizens, for a long time, have been educated one way about what to do with their waste in Ames. And that is going to need, we're going to need to re-educate people about the best way to handle their waste. So instead of throwing it all in one bin and expecting it to get sorted, I anticipate folks are going to have to do that more in their homes, in their businesses. So my guess is that means sorting out certain recyclables, metal, glass, probably number one and number two, plastic. I think the rest are probably a waste of time. And I think that is true nationally, or, you know, the industry for recycling would show you that. But we don't know yet for sure. This is just my guess, right? So separating out glass, plastics, the good ones, metals, and compost, like Tim mentioned, that is very important to get out of the waste stream because it has a use, right, that you can make a good product out of it. So getting compost out, getting those recyclables out, and then maybe sorting everything that's left, grinding up everything that's left. So I think there's still a purpose for the Resource Recovery Plant as a drop-off location or a facility of some kind, but there'll be a big re-education piece, I think.
Thank you. Due to the fine questions that came from the audience, we are going to not have time for final closing remarks. However, we have time for one last question, and one of the audience participants wrote a good one that I think kind of serves as a good closing question. And Mr. Curtin, you'll be the first to answer this one. Of all your efforts over years of service as a council member, which did you find most satisfying?
So I'm going to answer this in a very boring manner. The part that I find most satisfying is the budget. Because without a good budget, nothing else matters. And so there are lots of individual projects along the way that I'm very proud to have been associated with. But you need to know that we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state. That's not an accident. That has happened for two reasons. We have a city council that is committed to thoughtful, conservative fiscal budgets, and we have a city staff that has done amazing things to keep our taxes low. So we deliver outstanding service, day in and day out, at one of the lowest price points of any city in Iowa. And I'm very proud of that. We don't talk about that enough. Steve Shanker and his leadership team have done a phenomenal job of that. And I'm going to hang my hat on something that's not particularly exciting, but to me, that's the most important thing we do.
Ms. John, what's been exciting for you?
The Climate Action Plan would have to be one of the most rewarding things I've been able to work on in the past four years. And coming from 2020, when this was more of a conversation and existing sustainability efforts that we've been doing to put together a whole plan and a roadmap for how the city can start to move forward over the next 30, 40 years. I think that's been really exciting to be a part of and work on, and get a lot of community engagement and creative ideas together for how we'll be able to advance that. And now, moving forward into the implementation piece, I think it's going to be even more challenging work than just being able to plan for it, because now come the tough decisions and the tough conversations. And so I don't know if that will maybe be the most rewarding answer for me in the future. But right now, I'm really proud of the progress that we've made, and I'm excited to kind of dig in to where we're going.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
Well, in my year and 10 months of long service, I would say that actually, our conversation right now about housing is one that I'm really excited about, thinking about what is that, what it is that we can do immediately, but also continuing that discussion and thinking about what are the creative solutions that we can bring to this. Just echoing something that Tim had said a little bit ago about wanting Ames to be the model. I've always felt that Ames, with a university, with a great healthcare facility, and with a city like this, that we should have the brain power and the resources to solve some of these problems that have been entrenched in other places. And so I am excited, I am not discouraged. I'm very excited to see what's going to come next for the city in terms of looking at housing issues.
Thank you. Ms. Brown and Betty Hansen?
Oh, man, it's hard to pick. I would say the Climate Action Plan and many things related to that. But I think when I, when I first ran for council, I feel like that was more radical of a thought than it is now. Eight years ago, that was a pretty, still a pretty radical notion. And now I think it's, it's understood that that is something we need to do, right? So and that, even that change in perception about, yeah, the importance of climate and active transportation and things like that has really grown. And so I've been happiest to work on that.
Thank you. Dr. Betcher?
So I will give two answers. The first one is the long answer. I've been working for three years with a team from the Community and Regional Planning Program at Iowa State on improving citizen engagement and trying to bring underrepresented members of the community to the table, get them involved with city government. And that is an ongoing project that we're hoping can provide a new model for community engagement across the country. We're working with Professor Alenka Poplin in CRP, and her specialty is playful engagement. So we are going to continue to do some outreach and focus groups and that sort of thing on that in coming years. And the short answer is, I am thrilled that we have renamed our airport for Ames Aviation pioneer James Herman Banning, so that we have more representation of some of our underrepresented community members. And that was a pet project of mine. And I love the fact that council supported it and that the community has embraced it.
Thank you. For a very informative evening. Before we conclude, I want to remind you to vote on November 7. If you have already requested an absentee ballot, you have until November 7 to deliver that absentee ballot in person to the Administrative Building, 906 Sixth Street in Nevada, between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. To register to vote, please go to the Story County Auditor's Office to download a voter registration form, or you can register to vote on Election Day at the correct polling place for your address with your proper ID. Or to make it even much more convenient for you, we have a table in the back where you can register to vote or request an absentee ballot. Also, our chapter is hosting a Learn with the League lecture tomorrow, 7:00 p.m., right here at Ames Public Library. The topic is the State of Iowa's Public Education. Our speaker will be Mr. Pat O'Donnell, a retired public school administrator. So I thank you, candidates, for taking time to share your views and your comments and for your willingness to serve us. And thank you all for actively participating in the election process. This concludes our candidate forum. Thank you very much.